Okay, let's call this town council meeting to order. It's August 10th. I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. Let's stand for the singing of "O Canada."
O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Record of attendance, and I did receive a call from the deputy mayor. He's just going to be a few minutes late because he's running the Jay Strong. Thank you, councillor. Seconded by, okay. So, any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Absent with regrets? We are there, okay. Declare the conflict of interest. So, we can declare at that time. Go ahead, councillor.
Hi, I have one. 12A9. I'm declaring a conflict on, and I will step away at that time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Alrighty. Approval of agenda. So, the recommended motion is that the agenda be approved as circulated. Councillor Bowles, seconded by councillor Heather. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Approval of minutes. So, we are at Town Council, July 13th. Councillor Heather, seconded by councillor Lesser. All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, July 27th, please. Councillor Cleveland, seconded by councillor Heather. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. There's no public hearing. Don't see anything under business arising. Okay, so new business. Proposed service exchange agreement impacts. Go ahead, CAO.
So, your worship, as you're aware, there's a committee struck by NSFM that has gone through a, I guess, a two-year-long process of working with officials from the provincial government to see if they can negotiate a, some new arrangements around service exchange between municipalities and the province. They have come up with a deal, a proposed deal, and as you're all aware, there are a series of information sessions, online information sessions scheduled, and I encourage you to take part in those. There are some documents attached that explain, in broad terms, the impacts on the town of Yarmouth. So, I guess I would, I would offer, if you had any questions, that I might be able to answer for you tonight in anticipation of your participation in one of those sessions. Happy to do so. Otherwise, just, just encourage you to take part and, and recognize the fact that a committee of your peers has worked hard to, to bring about an agreement, and it has been a very, very long time since before my time as CAO, since there's been an agreement that changes the financial relationship between the province and municipality. So, this is, this is certainly a milestone. It's not the end of, of what needs to occur, but it is a first step, and I think you should, you should be proud of your colleagues for, for what they've achieved.
Thank you, CAO. Any questions? Go ahead, councillor Heather.
Thank you. I, yeah, I just, can you just clarify the piece on the obsolete schools?
Yes, so the obsolete schools, unfortunately, so what has occurred is that schools used to be built on town or municipal property, depending where they were built. And the Department of Education had the use of those schools until they were no longer needed. And when they were through with the schools, they would revert back to the municipality because the municipality had the deed. They were, they were the title holder all along. So, they just simply said, we're done, and there you go. So, that's the situation under which we received the high school and received South Centennial and Milton School. At a certain point, and I believe it was in the early 90s, that changed, and so schools started to be built on crown, crown lands. So, the provinces would purchase the land and build the school, and those schools subsequently will never revert to the municipality. They may be offered in the future, but there's no obligation to take them. Unfortunately, if the school has already been turned over to a municipality, as is the case with our high school, it does not qualify for this
This new one.
New, new rule. So, unfortunately, it, that piece doesn't help us.
Yeah, that was what, that was my question.
Yep.
Any, anything else, anyone? Okay, we can move on to the next one. Okay, so 11B is a micro-mobility bylaw that council passed. First reading of a micro-mobility bylaw as presented. Okay, by councillor Lesser's moved it. Seconded by? Seconded by councillor Cleveland. Okay, go ahead, councillor Lesser.
Just pulling it up here again. So, there were a couple, a couple of things that I'm not sure if they fit into, into this, and one of them being segways. I know segways aren't that popular in, in our town right now, but they have been. I mean, we've had Jim McLeod used to, used to drive one around. But the new segways are actually being operated from your knees down, and I don't know if that would fit into, into this definition. The reason I ask is because they also can go pretty fast and often operate it without helmets, and I don't know if, I don't know if it fits into this definition or not.
Yep.
So, your worship, this bylaw is, is micro-mobility because it's intended to, to, at some point, address all forms of micro-transportation that, that emerge. And segways were, you know, the stand-up segways were, were an early version of that. This bylaw doesn't cover that. This bylaw, as it's written, is to address electric kick scooters. So, these are the, the front two-wheel devices you stand on with handlebars. That is what this current bylaw is intended to address. And the reason that we've brought this forward rather quickly and, and solely dealing with electric kick scooters is that the Motor Vehicle Act has recently been amended in several ways to, to provide the RCMP or the police in, in the community to, to be able to enforce certain rules, that provinces establish those rules. However, the Registrar Motor Vehicles has advised police chiefs that unless a, unless a municipality has a bylaw regulating electric kick scooters, that none of those provisions can be enforced. So, we have modeled a bylaw off of the Halifax micro-mobility bylaw. That's what they call theirs, and we are dealing specifically with electric kick scooters so that those provisions of the Motor Vehicle Act that apply will be enforced in our, can be enforced in our community as well as the provisions in our bylaw. There are many restrictions in the act that are not addressed in our bylaw. They don't have to be. And in fact, the act doesn't give us the authority to regulate those things. But, as I said, the, the direction to the police chiefs was you don't enforce electric kick scooter rules unless there's a bylaw.
Go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, just a quick question. In regards to the, the definition, and it says electric kick scooters, if I'm reading it correctly, it means that there's a single wheel in the front?
Yes.
And yet, they make them with a double wheel in the front that are still electric. I'm wondering, what's the difference? They have two wheels in the front and one in the back. I'm just wondering why they wouldn't fit into the same category.
They may, in the act, this definition comes from the act. So, in the act, they define electric kick scooters exactly this way. And so, we pulled this definition, the Halifax pulled the definition directly from the Motor Vehicle Act definition of electric kick scooters. So, that is something else.
Yeah.
It's a three-wheel electric kick scooter.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. So, would they not be considered in the same light?
They could be.
They, they, they should be.
Should be, I guess, yeah.
Yes. Shouldn't need a bylaw either, but that's, you know.
So, your worship, what we can do is if you want to direct staff to make an appropriate amendment to capture the three-wheel electric kick scooters, we will, we will come up with words that describe those in addition to the two-wheel versions, and we will add that additional, I'll say that amendment to 2-point CI. We'll amend that.
Include both.
Right. We'll, we'll, we'll somehow amend that to, to include the other form of electric kick scooter we're aware of, and we'll bring it back for second reading. If that amendment, we'll bring it back for second, if first reading passes. And so, I think you're, you're going to make that amendment or make that motion.
Yeah, I'm gonna, you don't mind doing that?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Can I, it's okay, seconded by councillor Lesser. So, that motion is, is to address the three-wheeled. Okay, go ahead, councillor.
So, under, under that, would that still fall under the provincial regulations? Because you're saying that the two-wheeler was taken from the provincial, so the three-wheeler, it's not covered?
That, that will not fall under their definition.
Okay.
Now, their, their act is broad.
Okay.
Then, then this file, so their act covers everything, bicycles and so on. But the new amendments were about electric kick scooters, and they defined it as, as it is defined here. So, they may have another way that they can address bad behavior with those. You know, that's, that's kind of their, their issue with, councillor Dares is fighting for us, will correct their bylaw. We'll see the data.
Good. Yeah, thank you, councillor Dares. Okay, so are, are we good on this one? It's been moved and seconded. Were there any other questions on this one? Okay.
Are you shocked? You look like you had a question.
You look like, yeah.
No? Good.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you.
I was just going to change the way. Would you change your mind? Right.
Yeah, yeah, so we have to do the main motion. So, that, that motion was made as well and seconded, so for first reading. Okay? We good? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. 2023 Business Awards sponsorship. Okay, just a second, I just got to see what the, get this out in front of us. Okay, so our, our business community does this every year. The, I believe the chamber puts this on, so we're looking for a decision on sponsors. Councillor Dares and then councillor, go ahead.
My recollection is that we traditionally would, would take, go to sponsorship. I'm just wondering in what values in past years? I don't remember.
Do you remember?
Your worship, honestly, I don't remember, but I was going to recommend we probably should be an award sponsor. We certainly are supporters of, of small business here, and this will occur, these are business awards, not necessarily small business awards, but this will occur during Small Business Week, which is kind of the traditional way, and I think it would be kind of fitting to support it as an award sponsor. But that's just my opinion.
Okay. So, maybe the same level as 2022, and then staff will figure out what that was. Go ahead, councillor Bowles.
Thank you, your worship. So, I'm just looking for clarity. So, this is different than a grant to organizations. This is, does, this is not something that would be appropriate to defer to, to refer to the grants to organizations, a September process? No?
I would say no.
Okay, thank you. Just checking.
It's close, but it's, yeah. Okay, so go ahead there, councillor.
Sorry to lengthen this out, but you know, you're not wrong. There's, there's a difference between a grant and a sponsorship because in a sponsorship, you get, we get something back as well. So, it, it is somewhat different, but it's, it is. It's kind of one of those slippery slopes, I suppose. That's all.
I kind of like that presenting sponsor one myself, but.
I don't have a problem with that. Again, we, sorry.
Go ahead.
Again, we support small business, and I think it's important, but if presenting sponsor is, I'm, I'm also cheap. But that's my only nature, but presenting sponsor is fine as well, but we definitely, at the very least, I think, should support as, as an award sponsor.
All right, so the, the, did we make a motion yet?
No.
No, so I guess we got to have a motion before, but I guess I'm just looking in the difference between 1750 and 3,000 is 1,250, maybe.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, for $1,250, do you not say? Because most of the businesses are, are sitting right here within the town. When is this? This is in October. Okay, so we'll know in September. Well, we can do this in September. You just get the information on what it was last year and if we decide to do the 3,000. Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll put it in the, um, to refer to Committee of the Whole. Yeah, is that okay? Do you want to, councillor Heather?
I just wanted to point out that there, for that, for the 3,001, there are just two opportunities. I think that's the way I'm reading it.
Yeah. Oh, we should probably do it if we're going to do it.
Yeah, we need to be cognizant of that if we're interested in, in that.
Okay. What, what are you thinking?
Okay. Look, for me, I'm a supporter of small businesses, but it's, it's also part of, you know, I, I think that's an important part of what we do. And so, if, if you're willing to, you as a, or us as a town are willing to become a presenting partner, I, I have no problem making that motion. You know, that's fine by me. That, that's higher than we've done before, certainly, but that's, that also gets most of us to the event, I believe, and, you know, it, it shows our support, which is important, I think.
Okay, so you're making the motion on the 3,000. I'll make the motion. All right?
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Okay, discussion. So, we've had a little bit of discussion already. Is anybody not in agreement or, because I don't want to rush this one through its money. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. CMA 2024.
Excuse me, just wondering if, that the, they're both already taking those opportunities?
Yeah.
Do you automatically, you will be?
Councillor Heather, your lights on, just so you know. Okay, so the CMA 2024 and the recommended motion there is that council send a letter to the president of CMA 2024 asking how the town of Yarmouth can celebrate this event. So, that's the, the Acadian Congress, and, yeah, we just want to make sure that our support is there, that they understand that, and they would know better what they need or what, what would be helpful from us. Did you need, did you want to say anything else, CAO, I think?
No, just, just that, is we haven't been requested really to do anything specifically. It is a, it is a huge event. There will be a lot of people returning to our community who, who have roots here, and people who, who haven't been here before will come to, to celebrate Acadian heritage, and I think it's important as the town, as a regional center, that we're, we are a part of that celebration, although we are primarily in the Acadian community. We are, we are a town in the middle of two, two prominent Acadian communities. So, I think we need to ask, we need to ask, how do we, how do we celebrate appropriately? How do we join the celebration and get some guidance and find out what it is that they think would be appropriate and try to join?
Okay. I do. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Councillor Bowles, seconded by councillor Lesser. Any discussion on this one? This is pretty exciting. This is, this is huge. This is huge. Exactly. Yeah, that's important. Go ahead, councillor Heather.
I think it's, it's going to be a really important piece for the ferry for next year as well.
Yes.
Because a lot of those folks will be coming from the New England states and Louisiana and whatever, you know, and so I think that will certainly increase our, our ferry ridership.
Yeah. Positive all the way around. Okay, any more discussion on this one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Mariner Center appointment. So, the recommended, there's two recommended motions. We're looking for appointments to the Mariner Center Management Authority and the Mariner Center Nomination Committee. Would you like to speak to that, Mr. Chair of Mariner Center?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
In the new IMA, the Intermunicipal Agreement, which was just ratified between all three of our stakeholders, the town, the municipality of Yarmouth, municipality of Argyle, within that, there was a change in the basic makeup of what the board is going to look like at the Mariner Center. One of those changes will be, instead of having representation by one councillor for all three, there will be two councillors, so we need an extra councillor. So, that's, that's number one. We need some other councillor to attend those meetings because the board, which now is at nine, will become 12, and this will be effective next month. The other part, which isn't a huge rush for, but will come up fairly soon, is as part of the IMA, the nomination committee will no longer be a part of the board of the Mariner Center. The nomination committee will be made up of councillors that are not on the board. So, it's separate. They'll be using our matrix, our skills matrix, but we need someone for that as well. I believe we have two. We, we need two for that as well. And again, it will be two for each of the separate councils, the town, the municipality of Yarmouth, municipality of Argyle. So, that's what we're looking for today.
And, and the second one, the nomination committee is nominating to the Mariner Center Board?
Yes, exactly. So, we have, we have a structure in place right now where you, you serve a certain length of time and then you're not anymore, and we replace. It's, it's a constant flow of skills and a constant flow of fresh blood. Now, it's, it's stankered so that, you know, not everybody starts new, of course, but the concept is, is that we keep everything rolling, and we have a very good skills matrix. It's one of the first things we put together when I, when I became chair. So, we're, we're very proud of what we have at this point. Our citizen reps are very, very good. And so, that nomination committee will, will be ongoing, and it will require a little bit of work every year because every year we usually have multiple people who wish to become a part of the board. And it will be different too as well because before, if someone left and they were a resident of the town of Yarmouth, we had to replace them with a resident of the town of Yarmouth. That's no longer the case. They have to be a resident of the three municipalities, but we're looking at skill, not location. And so, again, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot that lies on that. So, it is, it's, it's a good thing. It gives everybody at council, almost everyone, you got to think all the councils are structured in basically the same way. There's six councillors. It gives four out of the six some kind of a hand within that Mariner Center Management Authority in some way, shape, or form, two serving on that nomination committee and two that are serving on the actual board. So, it's, it's very good because it gives everybody that, that buy-in that's going to be necessary as we move forward.
I love how you're doing it because when we set up, I'm thinking REN, when, I chaired the REN when we got it set up. We were the first in the province, so we were first out of the gate, first one to set up a REN, and, and that's what we did. We staggered. We set up that really strong matrix, and it didn't matter where you were, as long as you were within, and I just always called it the dream team.
Yeah, and very much like the REN, that, that group of non-members who were the nomination committee, they're kind of like, in a way, it's not exactly the same, but kind of like the REN's Oversight Committee.
Yeah.
So, it is, it's very much that kind of a structure. And what it does is it brings a quality board, and that's what we have, which is something that we're very proud of.
Yeah, you should be.
And we're going to need as we move forward.
Good stuff. Councillor Lesser?
I was just going to say, I'll, I'll serve on wherever you think I, I would best bet, I guess. I don't, I'm open to whatever.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add to, to what councillor Cleveland said around the mandate of the nominating committee. It has two other roles, and probably neither of them will be, will be activated during the term of this council, and one of them is on a 10-year cycle to review the intermunicipal agreement and make ready recommendations for amendments to the partners. So, that is scheduled. We have a 40-year agreement. So, so every 10 years, that group of six councillors will review the agreement and make recommendations to the owners for changes. They will also specifically review the, on a 10-year basis, the financial cost-sharing formula. So, they'll look at that, they'll look at how our communities have evolved, changed, and make, and make recommendations on, on that. So, those are additional roles that probably won't come up in the next couple of years, but at some point, that same group of councillors will have that additional responsibility. And that was very intentional, as you know, in the intermunicipal agreement, to empower a, a group of elected officials from three municipalities, a small group, a workable group, to do that heavy lifting.
Councillor Bowles?
Thank you, your worship. So, just to refresh my memory, this nominating committee will have nothing to do with the, with deciding any changes in the makeup of the expansion committee? That's, how did we, maybe that's, for another day. Okay, so it, it is not, okay, great, thanks.
Okay, so, let, let's, we should do nomination, so you can, you can nominate someone, it gets seconded. That's the way we want to do it. You can also put up your hand if you want to serve on something, so then we, then we know. Okay? Okay? Okay, so two for nomination? Yeah, yeah. When do you meet?
When do we need to get?
When does the Mariner Center Management Authority meet?
Usually they meet.
Month, well, we have a setup where actually we meet quarterly, in all honesty, but because of the amount of things that are going on right now, it's more likely to be kind of a monthly meeting, but it's not, it's not a regular, I think it's usually Tuesdays around four o'clock or so. But again, you know, things could change with the, the change in board. Maybe it's more convenient for another time or something like that. It's not, it's not gospel.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, let's start if, if nobody else, well, you, you're okay and I'm okay. So, can we do one motion? Yeah, probably. He said a little bit after seven. Do we want to wait? It's up to you guys. Are you okay waiting?
Yeah.
You're okay? Yeah. Okay, let's, let's keep going. He said a little bit after seven, so we'll just see where we are. He said a little bit after seven, so we'll just see where we are. Housing Accelerator Fund Amendment, CAO?
Your worship, that didn't, the document is not added to the agenda, but it was sent out by email. Lindsay's on vacation. I don't know how to add it to the electronic agenda, so.
Can't believe it.
Yeah. So the, the substance of the change is within, within the, the proposed program that we would offer, there is, there is a subsidy, a significant financial subsidy or award that would go to a developer building residential dwelling units. And that is proposed to be at $20,000 per unit. So it is not insignificant and it is not close to what it would cost to do the work, but it is a, a significant investment. So the, the program would run for three years. And at the end of three years, the way the original proposal was written or the application was written is that that program will close, it will end. And Natalie and I had a conversation and my question to her was, if we reached 80% of our goal, as an example, for what we hope to achieve with that investment, and we have all these new residential units developed in our community, why would we stop? And so what I asked her to do was to amend the application to say that it may, it may continue or it may conclude, so that it will be reviewed. So that does two things, is that it signals to, to the federal government to whom we're applying that, that if we have success with the program, we're not going to, we're not going to close it, that we're open and we're hopeful that it will be successful and we will continue it if it is successful, but we will evaluate it at three years. And so that is the amendment that Natalie thought was necessary to, to get your approval on, and she does believe that that will enhance our possibility of success. So that's what we're asking you to consider tonight.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Daers.
Yeah, based on that explanation, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Okay. Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Cleveland. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, report. Council Advisory Committee's committee of the whole. So Counselor Cleveland, do you mind doing that?
Not at all. I can do them all right up to number nine.
That's right.
Yeah.
And Counselor Bell will do number nine?
Okay.
Okay. If you're okay with that. Yeah. Go ahead.
All right. Recommended motion that council send a letter of thanks to Tanya Bain for her time with Yarmouth Recreation.
Okay. So moved, seconded by Counselor Bell. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Go ahead.
Recommended motion that council appoint Paul Nos Jr., Building Official, as Administrator of Dangerous or, Paul Nos Jr., Building Official, as opposed to Paul Nos Jr., as Administrator of Dangerous or Onsightly Premises Policy and Minimum Housing Standards Bylaw.
Okay. So moved. Counselor Lesser, seconded. Any discussion? It's funny how grammar, that comma.
Comma makes a difference.
We almost had, you know, Paul Nos Jr. as our new building official.
That's right.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you.
Recommended motion that council direct staff to investigate no smoking signage.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. Don't know what to have over that.
A little late on this one. Recommended motion that council direct staff to investigate a bylaw to address rules and repercussions for e-scooters and other motorized bikes.
Moved and seconded. You guys are way ahead of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council direct the CAO to submit a Housing Accelerator Fund Action Plan that includes the initiatives as generally outlined in Attachment A in the attached council report, along with all additional required documentation to the Canada Morgan and Housing Corporation as the town's application under the Housing Accelerator Fund Program.
Okay. So we just made the change above. Nobody, what do we, what do you want to do for this? Is that included in this?
These are both motions of council.
Okay. No, I just don't want to pass this if it's not in the one that we, okay. All right. So moved, seconded by Counselor Heather. Discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council authorize the CAO to enter into any contribution agreements or amending agreements that may be required should the town be approved for funding under that program.
Without asking Jerry?
That should be in there somewhere.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Daers. Discussion on this one? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council adopt the Remo Activation Compensation Policy as presented.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Heather. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council send a letter of support for a 2024 play-on event in Yarmouth.
Seconded by Counselor Lesser. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just you. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council grant up to $200,000 to the municipality of Argyle to support the construction of a six-lane synthetic track and field facility in Tuscan.
Okay. Moved, seconded by Counselor Bell. Discussion? I was going to ask a question too. Go ahead.
No, just a quick comment. I mean, I, I believe that this $200,000 was committed about the same time that there was a major project undertaken at the Mariner Center some years ago and that it never got off the ground, but there was an intention by the town council at that time to honor a $200,000 commitment to the project.
Yeah. And, and you're right, and it was, it was in the budget for a few years. Like we just, we made sure to carry it over because we didn't know when it, when it would take off. Good, good question. Go ahead, CAO.
So I can, I can report, your worship, that the vehicles are on site and the contractor's about to begin work.
Oh, my gosh. Now, how cool is that?
So October, probably this year, you'll have a top-notch track and field facility in our, in our county.
That is great.
Wonderful.
Good stuff.
Yeah. It's one, and you're right, it's, it's about time. It's a, it's a great thing. So my question was with regard to, to the Acadian Congress, that, that's going to be ready. Yeah. That's part of what they wanted it for. Yeah. Perfect. Good. Okay. So the motion's been made, it's been seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. So Counselor Cleveland stepped away for number nine. Counselor Bell, would you mind taking over for this one?
Not at all, your worship. The recommended motion is that council grant $50,000 to Discovery Southwest for the purchase of a franchise license.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Lesser. Discussion on this one? Go ahead. Counselor Daers?
Stop. Only to, for the information of the public in that this provides us a franchise to the Discovery Center in Halifax, correct? So we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Anything else, anyone? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, councilors, very much. Question, citizen advisory, so there's no planning, there was no planning?
There's one.
There's one. Great. Okay.
Just one.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I didn't see it.
Yeah. No, it's not there.
That's why.
Thank you, your worship. Just one motion, that council approve the recommendation of the Planning Advisory Committee to appoint Catherine Davidson as a member of the PAC.
Okay. Moved, seconded. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Reports from information. Okay. Questions for committee chairs? Counselor Daers, you were going to share some updates?
Yeah, just a couple, a couple of things on, one of them was because the people are curious, I guess, about the Deer Management Committee. We had a bit of a stall during the fire season with they and our personnel all committed to that, that cause, and they've had a heck of a time trying to catch up since. So we haven't had access to a lot of assistance and that's not their fault. I did have a conference call with Emma Vost yesterday and we're talking about next steps. And I think we're at a point right now where data collection is the next step and we're going to sort out how we do that. But secondly, we think it's timely that we, we have a face-to-face discussion with the public who are curious about what steps are being taken and when they're going to be taken. We have all kinds of suggestions on how to control the deer population and I think people need an honest answer to those questions. So we are planning to have a public information session probably in September or early October. We were hoping that we could have that here at Town Hall, perhaps on a weekday night, a weekday evening, and invite the public to come in and I believe that DNRR will provide a, a bit of a presentation and then we'll answer, provide direct answers to people's questions. So I just wanted to give that update quickly.
I think that's, yeah, that's excellent. Lot, lots of, lots of questions. I mean, I get phone calls daily. I can't imagine how many you get.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting.
Yeah. It's hard, it's hard because, you know, they see that Choro's done it and, you know, let's just.
I will add though, that Choro, from the time the mayor first wrote the letter till the time they had their first hunt, was that seven years?
Exactly.
So it's not something that's going to happen overnight and people that need to be aware of that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Good. That's great news. Okay, go ahead.
And further, just to give people a quick update on what's going on at the airport because we, we are moving to a few of the little minor things that have been done to encourage people to be aware of the fact that Yarmouth has an airport because quite honestly, we weren't on the worldwide radar. So just recently, we have contracted, it's not an expensive contract, we've contracted with a civilian outfit to install an automatic dependent surveillance broadcast system. What this does is basically any aircraft that are within our airspace will receive an automatic weather bulletin and it'll be, it'll, it'll identify that it's coming from Yarmouth. And those, those aircraft are quite dependent on the local weather because often they, they're only getting it from Moncton or from someplace in the states. So these will be live updates and it'll be a 24-hour system. We've also registered with the Atlantic Canada Certified Sites for designation. So that basically just puts us on, I mean, a lot of communities do that with, for example, industrial parks and things like that, but just as designated sites and it's through Invest Nova Scotia as well. The other thing that is, I think, probably of note right now is that there's a task, the Task Force Subcommittee that was formed has finalized a terms of reference and a mandate which they will be presenting to the members of the corporation within the next week in a special meeting. Once approved, I'll circulate that information to council once it's approved at the corporation. But basically it gives us a starting point to kick off the task force. And we also have a work plan, which will be an organic document that we're going to follow. And we'll be looking probably in the near future to populate that task force. Right now, it's a, it's a small subcommittee of four. We are looking for probably a few more to add to that, but we, we want key people that, not necessarily people by name, but maybe by position. So for example, we would like to have a representative from Department of National Defense. And the task force will be seeking ongoing operational support, financial support, and support for our critical infrastructure because we do have some, some deficiencies at the airport. The runways need work. We've learned during the, during the fires that we need to build redundancy into our fuel supply system. We have one tank out there and if anything was to happen to that tank, or that tank only holds a certain amount of, of Jet A1. So we are hoping to put another tank in and we're, we're working in that direction. And, and the third part of that is that we are looking at commercialization of the property to see if we can generate some, some businesses out there. So it's, it's all good stuff, working in a positive manner and really looking forward to what's going to happen in the next few weeks, next few months. I mentioned this yesterday and I'm going to mention it again, if anyone hasn't had an opportunity to drop in the airport and look at the mural that's being prepared by Daniel Mahood, it's absolutely spectacular. It celebrates the history of the airport and it's, she's just once again showing off her talent. So anyway, thank you.
Good stuff. Thank you.
Any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Counselor Daers? Go ahead.
With the announcement, I guess last week, of the three flights daily for the life, lifeflight, is that, just bringing up some of the deficiencies, is that, is there any talk at all from the province that there may be some money coming, if they're using the airport towards any of the upgrades or is it actually sufficient enough, I guess, to operate as is? I'm just wondering if there's any cost going to come up with? I think it's a good service that it's, it's like freeing, it's freeing up our ambulances. So I just didn't know if it came with any potential of some, fixing some of those deficiencies, I guess.
Go ahead, Counselor Daers.
Yeah, we're not aware of any, any link to any, I mean, this came as a surprise to, I think, everybody. So we're not aware of any funding that will become available because of that, but we're hopeful that, that the task force will be able to identify our needs and the importance of this, of this infrastructure in our community and, and for the province.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Any questions for any other committees or does anybody want to share anything? All good? Okay. The Waterfront Advisory Committee is up and running. Just, just so you all know, we, we've got citizens and council members on there. We had our first meeting, which was, I mean, it was, it was a fun meeting. It's positive because we're so excited about the waterfront and the potential there. You know, there, there was work done right up to this point. We're, we're just going to carry on and, and continue. So we did have, I'll call it the Waterfront Action Plan. I, I don't know what else to call it, but we had that done by a company a few years ago. And we kind of dug that out, read through that and, and came up with the list of, you know, what should we do? Asked the committee members to just kind of, you know, where do you think it falls? And actually asked staff to, to look into, you know, how feasible would this, would this work? Is this where we should go? Is this direction? And nothing's written in stone. It's, it's just, we needed to start somewhere and the CAO was, you know, you can, you can speak to this, but it was important to the CAO that, you know, we don't want to inundate staff with 50 things. Let's start with two, see where we go. And so, so we're pretty excited about that. There's a lot of great things in that report. There's a lot of great things in that report, we just have to dig it out and start going. And it's like that downtown blueprint, didn't do any good sitting on a shelf, but once you start digging it out and committing to do the work, you know, life changes for everyone. So we can all see that. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so the two recommendations that came out of the meeting were discussed by a group of staff today and so a report will be going back to the Waterfront Advisory Committee, kind of laying out what the process would be to follow through on those ideas and kind of, you know, what kind of level of effort that would be. And the committee will discuss that at their next meeting in September and if they feel that they want to recommend council, so they understand what the work is involved, not just what the end result is. So if they feel comfortable recommending those to council, then you'll see those at probably at the, we might miss September council, so October council. So.
Or the CAF, September CAF.
We don't bring recommendations from one committee to another.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yes, that's right.
Usually. So there may be exceptions to that and so let me correct myself, Your Worship. The Waterfront Advisory Committee's mandate is everything waterfront and, but they aren't exclusively everything waterfront. So take planning advisory for an example, if there's a planning application that is on Water Street, then we have committed that they will get a look, they'll get a say. They can give advice to the PAC from the waterfront perspective, but that's it, right, is they have a voice on it. So that's an example where we wouldn't ask a committee to recommend to another committee or give advice to another committee, but it's pretty rare that we do that.
Good stuff, thank you. All right, any, go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you, Your Worship. So with regards to the Waterfront Advisory Committee, you said it's all things waterfront. I'm trying to see how that fits in with kind of the silos that I see on the waterfront because we have the port, which is the mandate of the Industrial Commission, we have the tourism-related interests on the waterfront, we have the marina, we have commercial and marine industrial on the waterfront and how do you envision making sure that there's feedback and representation so safe for the fishers, the port, the port part of the waterfront in the Waterfront Advisory Committee? I'm just wondering, is there, are there, do you anticipate having like a liaison person who sort of is on both of those boards or, I mean, how, how are we going to make sure that we take the top off the pyramid and level the, level it so that we have not silos but collaboration and alignment, an alignment of interests?
Yeah.
Okay, so two responses to that, you can pick which one you like. The first one is the matrix that's used to appoint the Waterfront Advisory Committee in the first place. So there are a number of citizens and they have backgrounds that represent some interests on the waterfront in the community. So that's, that's the first, is that like any advisory committee, you select and you try to be broad and so we have that. But the second piece is an initiative that the Waterfront Advisory Committee or the town could take. And this is something that Natalie and I and I believe, Your Worship, I believe you were in Portland with us several years ago. Natalie and I intended, and you may have as well, a waterfront council that they have in Portland. And the purpose of that group is just exactly what you articulated. It is, it is all of the interests on their waterfront sit around a table once a month and the only purpose for the meeting is to share, right? They have no authority to act as a group, but it is to share what's your group doing, what's your group doing, what's bothering you and share information. And I believe, if memory serves, they actually issue a electronic newsletter to take the information that's shared at that table and spread it further in the community. So I think that's an initiative that is something that, you know, perhaps we should talk about at the Waterfront Advisory Committee in September, to take the top off the pyramid and to help you know, if the members of the committee attended a waterfront council, they would be better informed to advise council and PAC and so on.
Anyone else? Welcome, deputy. Can you update, would you mind updating us because we know it was Jay Strong Golf today and we get excited about this?
Yeah, I apologize for being a little bit late, but we had quite a bit of money to count, so I will say we were just shy of $51,000 at our golf tournament today and that's profit. We made the most we ever made at our softball tournament a couple of weeks ago with over $18,000 in our last time around. Last year we did 38, so it just goes to show that the community steps up and none of this could be done without our supporters and sponsors and people who continually come out. And I'm happy to say that 100% of that money comes back to our kids. So Jay Strong is exclusive to Yarmouth County, so money does not go outside of, it's for our kids, it stays here. There's no overhead, so $51,000 of that, $51,000 outside of bank fees will all go back to the kids. So just a big thank you to the community and overwhelmed seeing that number and very thankful and yeah, it's good to see, so thank you.
How close to $51,000?
Like 50 bucks or it was like $50,928, I believe, so.
Oh, my gosh, do you know where that's coming from?
Yeah.
That's coming from the mayor's fund.
There we go, so.
The mayor's and the deputy mayor's fund.
Thank you, so thank you very much for that.
So figure out what that number is and we'll hit $51,000.
Awesome, thank you for that.
Yeah, good stuff. Like the fact that every penny goes back into the kids is just, that's goosebump stuff, you know? So good job, everyone. All right, any more questions? We're good? Approval of invoices. Oh, wait a second, let's do that, yes. Okay, so what happened earlier is we were looking at the Mariner Center motion and we had, we have one person to appoint to the management authority and two people to appoint to the nomination committee that would nominate people to the Mariner Center Board. Councilor Lesser said he would sit anywhere, councillors, both of the councillors, Hatfield, said that they would do the nomination committee and then we all agreed you may be interested in one or the other, so.
So there's three sports and there's three people?
Well, there's, no, there's, no, there's.
I can't, 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 I can't.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Bell, maybe I shouldn't even have said that.
Given what we have just heard about, I mean, the deputy mayor is invested in youth and recreation in our community and if he's willing to serve, I'm willing to step back because I think that he is a perfect fit. Just saying, thank you.
I would nominate Deputy Mayor Barry to whatever position he chooses to take with the Mariners Center, Mariners Centers Board.
Councilor Lesser?
Agreeing with that comment, I'm just wondering, I think probably the management authority would make more sense, I don't know if, I don't know, I'm not sure how, but, and once again, I'm willing to do whatever, so.
Okay, let's figure this one out. So someone's going, one person's going on the management authority for Mariners. Oh, sorry, and two to the nomination.
Your Worship, thank you, I'd like to nominate Deputy Mayor Barry for the management, for the management board position.
Okay, are you accept?
I just.
Huh? I'm probably not going to be a second or no, I'm just, second, the Councilor Lesser, I have to tease you. Okay, so are you okay with that? Okay.
Yeah.
So moved and seconded, that the deputy mayor be appointed to the Mariners Center Management Authority? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, so then we have a recommended motion that council appoint two people to the Mariners Center Nomination Committee. Okay, go ahead, Councilor Lesser.
Just to talk again, after making my little comment last night about everybody doing so much work, working towards the expansion and I'm glad they're doing it because I'm not doing any work, that's why I felt it was important to say I'm willing to do whatever. But if the other Hatfield, the two council, Councilor Hatfields are interested in doing it, they can and I can certainly take either one of those spots. I'm just offering if anybody wants, but I'm not.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I do have a motion.
That what?
Here, we, Councilor Lesser, you want to, you want to, please?
Okay.
You have a motion?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. One more motion? Yeah. Yeah, seconder?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you accept, Councilor Hatfield? Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. We have our three people.
I think everybody's got to figure this one out.
Right? Yeah, that's right.
This is going to have a blast.
Right, oh, she's going to have a blast, yes, she is. Okay, good. So can we have an approval of the invoices, please? Councilor Lesser, seconded by Councilor Dairs. I thought I saw your hand go up, sorry. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Date of next meeting is September 14th. Okay? Do we have anything in camera, CAO? One thing in camera?
I have one.
Okay, good. So a motion to go in camera?
Some motion.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to have to go in.
Uh, four. Yep, I'll look at it.
Thank you. We're good.